All right, I'll go ahead and call us to order. This is a workshop on curbs for subdivisions. And for members of the planning commission, John has informed me that because of the technical material that we will be following, looking at tonight, it will count as training. So, thank you for showing up, and we had a good turnout. Just to remind everybody, this is a workshop. We will not conduct any formal business. We will not be taking any votes on information that is presented to us tonight. But the purpose of the workshop is to inform us from a technical standpoint about curbs, and hopefully we can, if we deem necessary, within the next meeting or so, we can move forward with any action that we want to take. Thank you, members of the audience. There will be opportunity for you to speak or provide input throughout the meeting. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to John and Doug.
I'm going to let Doug handle the first part of this one. I'm just kind of backstopping him. He was the one that wrote both of the memos, and I think just a summary, very brief summary of both of the memos, particularly the second one, since that's one that's the newest, would be in order.
Does everybody have a copy of both? If you want to take a quick look at the July 15 memo, we can discuss it if you have any questions. It basically starts out with the, the first picture on page one is actually just a barrier curb. This is an extruded curb that the county used to permit. And there's some examples after that. And we can discuss anything along the way that you'd like to do, like to talk about. When you get to page three, you'll see a mountable concrete curb and gutter. This is where the concrete is actually put on the stone surface and actually forms part of the roadway. So that whole section, that whole 30 inches, is actually the curb. The next drawing, the bottom one is essentially the same as the one on the previous page. The top one is the one that the county approved through an amendment to the subdivision regulations in 2007. That was one year after they adopted the 30-inch curb. In agreement with the highway department and, you know, staff recommendation, the planning commission approved removing essentially 12 inches of concrete out of the driving surface. And the basis of that was this is essentially the same strength of curb, and there's a great cost savings in concrete, just by eliminating that one foot. Keep in mind, though, when you eliminate the one foot of concrete, you have to make it up, and it's actually two feet, one foot on either side of the road. You have to make it up in asphalt and stone. So, I mean, there's still another cost there. If you move to page six real quick, you'll see some of the problems that the county was dealing with at the time. The first one, that actually says Morgan Tenney Estates. The problem simply in this draw, in this picture, you'll see is the curb has been cut. And then, once the curb has been cut, you change the integrity of the road to move water. That's one of the main functions of the road, and we'll get into that in a little bit. This particular one is not a much of a problem as we've seen in other ones, simply because they put a hump in the driveway, so the water's still going to stay on the road. A lot of times what we see, and what the highway department has seen, is once they cut that curb and they don't put in a concrete driveway and leave a little bit of a lip, is they let it run down to the garage or into the yard, and then they call the county and say, "We have a water problem," after they cut the driveway and didn't put the new driveway in properly. But one below it is more typical of a problem that we saw. This is a, this is an actual extruded or barrier curb. This is a stand-up 10-inch, 8 to 10-inch concrete curb. And this was the standard that the county took for a long, long time. And these two pictures, I think the highway department will agree, these were the basis for the reason that we changed the regulations in the first place in 2006. It didn't start in 2006. It started about 2000 to 2005, when we had a lot of subdivisions going in at the same time. And it wasn't so much a problem with the developers, the problem was with the home builders. They didn't always bring in the right equipment to remove the curb before they concreted the new driveway in. And we don't have a requirement for a concrete driveway off a curb. So what you see above is actually still there today, the gravel. I mean, we don't make them go back and fix it. The problem that we had below is this was actually a piece of equipment that was used to remove the curb to build the home. They didn't go saw cut it. They didn't go rent a saw or have a saw company come out and cut it and build the new concrete. What they did is they just simply hit it with a front-end loader. And this is just a part of the problem. This broken curb actually went down the road for about 120 feet. It was broken all the way down the road. I just, I couldn't find those pictures. If you move to the next page, page seven, when we changed the regulations in 2006, this was the curb that was the 30-inch curb. And we'll go back to, this is actually curb and gutter. You see the large concrete section that is actually on the, closer to the pavement, that's actually the lower section, and the mountable part is to the left. This was built in Panorama, Phase Six of Panorama by Mr. Gregory. Mr. Gregory was on that first committee that recommended for the improved mountable curb. And then after he built it, he recommended we make it less expensive, because he said it was very costly. And subsequently, there's no houses in that development, except for three. And it's just never, never amounted to anything. If we go to page eight, these are actually two examples of the 18-inch mountable curb. I know they look almost flat, but they're not. It's just the way the pictures came out. If you look at the top one, you see the dirty line in the concrete. That's actually the lower section where the water runs. The cleaner concrete to the left is actually the mountable curb section, and obviously the grass is the backfill. The one below it is essentially the exact same curb, and I know it looks flat, but once again, there is a drainage channel in the concrete. So essentially, if you look at the above picture, five inches of the concrete are in the driving surface of the road. The next one is the same thing. It's another 18-inch mountable curb. This was built in Silverbrook Subdivision. This was the last one, I believe, that we had built before everything really, really slowed down. And we haven't had any of these curbs at all built since 2007. I think that's the date. Yeah, I'm going to say 2007, at the latest maybe 2008, if they were still under construction. Page 10 shows a mountable curb that's been built in Griffiths Mill. This was built on the boulevard section. And I'm not sure really how it got built, but it did, because the regulations was for the 18. But I think we had an agreement, since the boulevard wasn't going to contain all housing, that they could do a modified version of the mountable curb. I don't really remember all the history. If anybody knows different, please tell me. But if you'll notice on this one, the mountable section of the curb is just the section that goes from the edge of the asphalt to where you would pull into your driveway. And essentially, this doesn't have to be cut. But this was never in the regulations, but it was an approved curb. I mean, it is part of the county curb system now. If you'll move to the next page, 11, you'll see Ridge View. This is a mountable curb. It's a 13-inch curb. If you look at the, what is that thing, the little ruler there, you can actually see where the drainage area would be in that curb. Now, if you get a higher amount of rainfall, that, the whole curb becomes a ditch. You know, it's not just a little channel. You know, all the way up to the top of your curb or your backfill, you're still going to get drainage. This one was built many years ago. It's part of the county, you know, it's in the county road system. The reason this curb was built and accepted, we didn't have a standard at that time, the developer, I believe it was Jay Dunlap, he was building a mobile home subdivision. All the subdivisions, all the homes are mobile homes. And he was concerned about cutting the curbs and breaking the curbs when he was bringing all those units in on trailers. And so, I think through the recommendation of staff and the highway department at the time, and I believe this was a year or two before I got here, but those curbs did get built. So, we have all kinds of curbs in the county, you know, not just ones based on our standards, but we have ones that go way, way back. On page 12, you'll see a curb section. This is in Blount County, but it's actually in the Mariville Planning Region. And these are Mariville modified curbs, Mariville mountable curbs. I'm going to really confuse you here. They call them a mountable, non-mountable curb. I don't know why. But essentially, this is a curb you can mount, but it's not a daily driver, so you still cut it for the driveways. It's mountable, I guess, from the aspect that you can drive over it to do work if necessary. But if you look down the driveways there, the first house, you'll see that they actually cut that curb and concreted the driveway up to the edge of it. We go toward the last few pages. We put some options in there. Blount County Planning Commission could allow for multiple curb designs. I'm going to let you know right now, the subdivision regulations allow for three, three options currently. And I'm not going to call them all curb options, because they're not. The subdivision regulations currently allow for the 18-inch curb and gutter. That's the 12-inch mountable curb, which is actually truly a drive-over curb with five inches of concrete going into the roadway. The section option that the subdivision regulations allow is a barrier curb. There's no standard on it. We don't have one drawn. But the regulations state that a barrier curb can be approved when the highway department or the highway superintendent says it's okay. And it says for steep sections of road, such as in mountains. That's all it specifies. The third option is to not build a curb at all. It's to build a road with shoulders and ditches. So once again, if we go, look at page 14, I've listed some options. Basically, I've only expanded on the current situation slightly. One is to allow a barrier curb, which we do when Mr. Dunlap says it's okay. Two is a modified 12-inch mountable curb design placed on the binder course, which would be something we'd have to come up with. It could be similar to the one that you saw at Griffiths Mill or the one that you saw for Ridge View on page 11. That's just an idea. The next is the existing 18-inch mountable curb and gutter. And then, once again, the existing uncurb road. So, you'd have four options, the barrier curb, and I actually added something to that. If we're going to allow a barrier curb, then we ought to have some way, and I know the highway department will speak to this, but some way that we actually control when they get cut through a permit process. And it doesn't have to be administered by the highway department. Maybe the building codes guys could do that or something. If you cut the curb, you have to get a permit, so there's quality control. Someone inspects it. They make sure that they're not changing the integrity of the road from moving water, channeling water. Having said that, I'm just going to lay out those four ideas, and I'm going to move to the next page, page 15. That would be just an example of a mountable curb that we could possibly integrate into the subdivision regulations, or not. And page 16 is, it says Cape Cod berm. That's basically a mountable curb. You can see it's actually built on the binder course, and it's actually laid back a little bit to give it some strength and some stability. You know, I personally think that a curb like this would work, because if you put a concrete driveway up to the back of it, it's probably not going to go anywhere. But the highway department has some issues with the thinning of the asphalt at the front. I'm going to let them speak to that when we get there. I'm going to move briefly to the second memo, which is dated July 28, 2015. This is curb function and fully mountable curbs versus extruded curb costs. I would like to first, before I get started, I would like to, you know, thank Tom Weston. We spent a lot of time talking about this. He provided a lot of this information to me. Tom's been in the road building business a long time, and as far as I know, he's probably only one of two or three people that are even building curbs in Blount County at this time. It's not to say there won't be more, but he's very familiar with the process. If you don't understand something in here, or I can't answer it, and I hope I've represented Tom's ideas, I've been in, I mean, I've watched Tom build these curbs for a long time, but John said, "Let's put something in there about the purpose and function of a curb." And I started looking at our regulations, and everybody has a definition, so I just got on the internet and looked up Wikipedia, and I copied what they had, and it really is pretty, pretty clear what the purpose, you know, of the curb is. It's to, you know, channel actually your traffic flow, but it's also to move water, and it gives support, it gives structural support to the pavement and the edge of the road. And those are things that also I think that the highway department will speak to a little bit more. There's some other information in there about, you know, not having curbs on higher-speed roads, because they can actually flip a car if they're at a high speed. And that's why you see, and, you know, Mr. Dunlap was quick to point this out the other day, you know, we don't have curbs on county roads, you know, for that purpose, because they are higher-speed roads. And you will see them on some higher-speed roads, but typically, they are more of a mountable curb, so if you hit it, you're not going to roll a vehicle. If you look on page two, you'll see, we start talking about fully mountable curbs versus extruded curbs and construction cost. I've gone into a lot of detail here. The piece of equipment you see there, it's called a slipform machine or a slipform curb machine. This is a pretty big one. That curb there, it's not identical to the one we require, but that's about what it's going to look like. A 30, well, that's a little bigger. That's probably more like a 30-inch, the one that we had before. But that's a pretty substantial curb being laid right on the stone. And from what I understand, you actually have to put the stone down, or you put that right on the ground, and then you come and spread the stone between the curbs. So it creates some additional costs with hauling and moving stone, but those are, you know, those are other considerations. The next page has a smaller slipform machine. It's still a pretty substantial machine, and if you look at the curb, it's a, it's a pretty substantial curb. And that's basically what we're building now. And I also have some language in there talking about those, those little rods you see on the line. That's actually part of the process of putting this curb down. It makes it more involved, and it increases the cost. And the details of that are in there. If you have questions, like I said, myself, or Tom, or Bill, or anybody could probably answer them. On page four, this is a very rare curb, but I have seen this done. This would be a curb and gutter formed in place. I would imagine that this probably would cost more than what you saw with one of these big machines. Let's go to page five. This is an extruded curb on page five. This is the previous type of curb that we used to approve all the time, put on the binder with a lot smaller machine. And it just says, "Construction cost, time." Construction time and cost. This smaller machine and a version of the larger slipform machine, Mr. Weston has both, and he's invited us to come look at them at some point, if we want to make a field trip or a training session out of that, if Tom would be willing, and explain some of that. He did invite me. I don't know if he invited 13 other people, but I guess I'm inviting him, Tom. Anyway, that might be, you know, a little bit of an education. I put some cost comparisons there, and you see those on page Tom, five, on page five, Tom? Those are what we talked about, right? Those numbers are exactly what we came up with. So, I think they're, from a source standpoint, I don't know that we can find anybody more reliable than Tom. And I know, you know, Bill Dunlap's got some comments. I'll just leave it there for now. I'll try to answer any questions, but I would also encourage you to ask questions of the gentlemen sitting out here, because that's why they're here.
Would you like to address this tonight, or address this the other evening?
There's a few here now that weren't here before. I'm Ed Shore, been in this business 39 years. And as I said before, it's more about economy. I've always been an advocate for economical housing, and it starts with the price, is a lot. And you can see the numbers that he presented, and they are spot-on as to how much cost it adds. And one thing I didn't understand before, the consistency. In the planning region, you have the standard city curb, and even though it's a county road, and the county has to maintain it, and there are a lot more of those, because they're in the planning region, than there are out in the county. And I really don't understand why you can have the bulk of the curbs in subdivisions, it's in the region, they're county roads, but to have a city of Mariville curb, and then you go over that line, and you have a different curb, curb and gutter. And one other thing about cost, not only the cost now, as I said before, the cost in the future. It's not a matter of if you will have to resurface, it's when. And if you have curb and gutter, you have to mill it down. Very expensive process. I don't think the county has a, you got a milling machine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I didn't realize that. But I see Harrisons milling on the streets all the time, and it's a very expensive proposition. So when you do have to resurface, so much more expensive, thinking about the future cost of milling the streets, milling the surface. So, I am a big proponent of the less expensive curb. And I understand, believe you me, I have seen curbs brutalized, knocked out, pushed out, whatever, and unless you're there to supervise, it can happen. There's also damages to curbs and gutters. I have seen separation on the curb and gutter, which allows water infiltration, more so because there's a joint there, than instead of an overlap joint like you have on a, on just a standing curb. The standing curb, you always have binder underneath. A curb and gutter, you can have it on the ground, and if you get water infiltration on the ground, then it's, it's a freeze, it's more difficult. So, I'm a big proponent of the consistency. If you're going to have it in the region, have the rest of the county roads be standing curbs.
Is there anyone else in the construction industry that would like to address us or provide your input and comments?
My name's Al Blankenship. I've done concrete for about 30 years. The curb and gutter, in my opinion, is a lot better. It's a lot stronger, and I disagree, it's going to last a lot longer time. It's kind of like a monolithic slab. You have the footer, the concrete, the slab ties in together. It's all tied in, it's more structurally sound. I also understand, as a developer, I'm a developer too, the cost. And Mr. Shore's right, the cost on the extruded curb is, is a whole lot cheaper. And the numbers are correct, in my opinion, but I think that the extruded curbs, the filtration of the water and stuff, I'd probably disagree on my opinion, but it's an opinion. It sets on top of the asphalt. If you go through Royal Oaks or other places, you can see that the curbs are broken. You know, they have joints too. You have to have a control joint every 20 feet or whatever is specified. Same thing with curb and gutter. There are control joints and everything. If, you know, there's different specifications, but as far as cost and being economically feasible as a developer also, I think the extruded curb is probably beneficial on the front side for the developers, I think, in the long run. And I hate to say it, the extruded curb is better off for the county. But that's, you know, that's all I'd say. But if y'all have any questions in concrete, I've been there for 30 years. I could probably, you know, I've worked for most, a lot of people up here.
Anyone on the commission have any questions of, of the gentleman? I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Al Blankenship.
Al Blankenship.
I've got a, oh, I'm sorry, wrong.
I'll try and go ahead, Tom.
I've got a question, and maybe it may not be just for you, Al, but as I look at the pictures, and I see the 12-inch mountable curb or the 13-inch mountable curb, what does that curb not do or does do that the 18-inch that we currently have?
There's different interpretations. The curb that we're doing in the subdivision we're doing right now, it's, it's basically, it's a, it's a slipform curb. You can design the curbs to do different things. I like the Alcoa curb, the one that they use. It's cleaner, it's neater, you can drive a Porsche over it or anything, their curb and gutter, that we use when we do developments in Alcoa. The extruded curb machine is brittle. It breaks, you know, breaks down over time. There's not enough meat on it, not enough concrete. If it had rebar throughout it or something, it would probably be a whole lot better. It sets on asphalt. Asphalt and concrete both expand and contract. Asphalt's always, you know, in the summertime driveways, you know, you can feel at the end, every roadway that you come to a stoplight, you know, boom, 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 because it moves so much, and it moves a lot. Personally, I don't like an extruded curb, but as a developer, I understand the cost, and curb and gutter is a lot more expensive. And, but, I mean, opinions is opinions, and I think the curb and gutter, long-term, will be more economical in an opinion, but if, it depends on how much you're going to try to, you know, repair, you know.
Back to my question, Al. The 12 or 13-inch example that we saw, what, what would that not do, I should say, versus the 18 inches that we currently have? And if that's not answered, you have...
It's, it's, it's going to carry water. It's a curb and gutter. Water goes to, water rides down the surface. Is that what you're...
Would we be jeopardizing, let's just say that that was an option, and what would that not do, the 12 or 13 inch that the 18 inch does? And maybe you're not...
It would do the same. It could do the same, you know, function.
Would we be jeopardizing the integrity of anything from long-term, or, I'm just trying to get an idea from, you know, from not being a developer and not being a maintenance person, but...
No, you probably won't jeopardize nothing from a 13-inch to an 18-inch curb. The only thing is, is it's not going to have, it's not going to be as strong. Concrete is, when you put pressure on it, it causes tension on the bottom. So if you put rebar or some kind of reinforcement, it distributes the tension out and takes the pressure away. Asphalt, it moves all the time. You know, it moves up and down. It don't have rebar, it's not structural in that way. So, I don't think that it would jeopardize anything. The biggest thing that I can see with them talking about the workshop on the curb and stuff is cost. So, we're doing, you know, the cost is probably the biggest factor on the development side, which I understand, just like they understand, but I don't think it'd jeopardize anything.
Well, and that's kind of my perspective, I think, as my, my responsibilities of, of helping address our regulations. If there's a way that we can not jeopardize long-term cost and liability to the county, but also somewhat help from a development standpoint, I don't think that's a bad approach, but I want to make sure there's not something I don't understand from a long, from a long-term county responsibility.
And to answer some of their questions, just to answer, Tellico Village, if you do a driveway in Tellico Village, I dealt with a problem the other day, said they'd been calling the county highway department, said water was running over. I said, "Ma'am, there's no way. You know, water don't go uphill." She said, "Well, I guarantee it comes down my yard." Tellico Village, they put in the driveway for the builder, when he builds a house, if the driveway goes toward the house, or driveway goes toward the road, at the end of the driveways, they have to have a drain, a track drain, with, you know, 80% at the end of the driveway to catch the water. You know, that's something that, you know, that's more cost to the builder, less cost to the developer, but there's, there are certain specifications that they could probably put in on the end of the driveways to push water toward the road. You take the curb and the gutter, and if you kind of bend it like this, and the water, the water rides down the gutter. You know, and you've got, from this point to this point, if you got, you know, four inches higher here, three inches higher, whatever, the water's only going, the curb's only going to carry, carry two to three inches deep of water, you know, before it goes over into the driveway and runs down toward the house or whatever. But on that extruded curb, you have to cut the curb. You have to do a curb cut. Like, they thought, everybody hits them with the ball cat and just tears them. We cut ours, we don't cut them straight, we cut all of ours at an angle to tie them back in to make them look better. If there was some way of drawing up, that people who do curb cuts, and they tie them back in correctly, it could be straight, equal, whatever. back in correctly, it, it could be straight, equal, whatever, angled or straight or whatever, that would be, that would be a good solution for that style. But ninety percent of the people are just going to knock it out and whatever, you know, like there's a joint here, joint here, you know, like Mariville, five feet out, five foot in, Alcoa, they have radiuses on every driveway at the end, five foot out, five foot in. That way, when you radius it and you tie it in to the curb, it looks good. And it works, it's, it's more, like I said, it's tension when you hit concrete. So if they hit the edge of that curb coming in that driveway, hit the edge of that curb, and it's an extruded curb, you know, you've only got six, eight inches, then it's going to break it. A curb and gutter, you got eighteen inches, and it's tied together, top to bottom, and it's thicker. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it could go either way. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Commissioner French?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not, what I have is not necessary for you, Mr. Blankenship. I'm neither a developer or a concrete man, so I, I don't have, I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm just trying to agree with Tom. What I'm looking for is what's going to be best for the county. And I realize what everybody's concerned with is their back pocket, bottom line. It's no different than any other business. Everybody's looking for what they can put in their back pocket. My question, I have several questions. One, the prices on the cost comparison, the mountable curb at fourteen to fifteen dollars a linear foot, is that the eighteen inch, is that the thirty inch mountable curb? Which one is it?
That's the eighteen inch.
All right. Next question, the twelve inch mountable curb, I don't see anything about a cost for it, is, what's the cost on it?
Well, we're not building it, so I don't have a.
Pardon me?
We don't, we're not building it. I don't know anybody.
I understand that, but, I mean, you ought to be able to project what, based on what eighteen and thirty inch cost, you ought to be able to check what a twelve inch cost. I don't have any idea what that's going to cost.
Al, do you know that much?
It's, it's going to come, the, the twelve inch mountable curve's probably going to be a dollar more linear foot.
A dollar more?
A linear foot.
Than the eighteen inch?
No.
Okay. A dollar more, a dollar more than the extruded curb?
Yes.
Okay.
Six dollars a foot?
Probably around six dollars a foot.
Now, while we're on that subject.
Depends on how much volume.
While we're on that, and I, I hate to halt the, the conversation, but I, I've made several notes, and I, I, I want to get everything straight in my mind. The twelve inch curb, looking at it compared to the eighteen extruded curb, it looks to me like if a heavy truck were to back up on that curb, it's going to push that curb or push the dirt behind it. There's not a lot of.
You're correct.
There's not a lot of foundation behind that, that, that's going to support that curb. That's just what it looks like to me.
You're, you're correct.
Mr. French?
Yes.
I mean, since Al's standing up here.
I mean, I'm throwing it out for everybody. I want to hear both sides of everything.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I made a point while I was talking about that particular curb, and since Al's here, I mean, if you put a concrete driveway up behind it, it's not going to move, is it?
If you put a concrete driveway behind it, no.
It's not going to move then. If you just leave it dirt, it may move if you're driving over it.
I understand what you're saying, but everybody can't afford a concrete driveway, you know? Some people asphalt, some people are just going to have gravel, you know? That's, bottom line, that.
The twelve inch curb, I mean, it's, like you say, it, it depends on what situation, every situation is different. Like you say, gravel.
Exactly.
If you have a gravel drop, if you have an extru, you know, if you have an extruded curb and you have gravel behind it, you got to cut it. Then you got water runoff issues, you know? There, there's, 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 every situation is different and unique.
And what I'm hearing also, on the extruded curb, and I know we, we got away from the extruded curb, but to me, it seems to me like whoever's develop, whoever's putting in the driveway or developing, you could hold them responsible for breaking that curb. I mean, if, bottom line, what's wrong with that? What's wrong with saying, hey, man, if you, if you mess this curb up, or if you do something wrong to do that? I mean, there are ways you can cut that curb and not, you don't have to bump it with a bucket. You're going to tear it up, I understand that. Hold the whoever's doing that, hold them responsible for putting the curb back exactly the way it was. That, that's just my opinion. Now, the reason we, okay, I, if he wants to.
I'm not saying that specifically, but go ahead.
All right. Next question is that you moved away from the extruded curb because of, what I've read or heard, is a car's hitting it, and it, it causing problems with that. As far as speed, when you hit it, when a subdivision, they don't need to be going sixty and seventy-five miles an hour. In a subdivision, you know, twenty to twenty-five miles an hour is plenty. So if they hit that at, going at that speed, that's the driver's fault, I, the way I look at it. But these are things that, that have entered my mind while I'm looking at this and thinking, you know, some of these things, I think, could be handled. I'm just throwing those out for discussion to find out what options we've got.
The moral, the moral of the story is extruded curb is cheap, it's economical. As, as a concrete guy and as a developer, and we do both, as a developer, we hate to do curb and gutter because it kills our pockets. All right? I mean, it's, you said that comes. When you do curb and gutter, it, it costs so much more money to get in your pocket. The extruded curb is, is cheaper, and, and in my opinion, it may, it, it may be a better fit for the developer's pocket, but in the long run for the county, I don't think it's a better fit. I think curb and gutter's a better fit, in my opinion. I would take the extruded curb any day of the week, because, I mean, we're, we're developing, you know, close to two hundred lots in Blount County in the near future. So, I mean, we're, we would take it in a heartbeat because it's cheaper, and, you know, once we sell the lots, we don't have to worry about it no more. It's up to the county to take care of it. But if we, as tax, as a taxpayer, I don't get no money back as a taxpayer, I understand the longevity of it. You know, you're probably looking, curb and gutter, you know, it's, it's a, in my opinion, it's the Cadillac versus the Pinto.
Well, I, I think the looks of, of the, the mountable curb are a lot better than the extruded curb. I, I don't, plus, and, and again, I said, I'm not a developer.
Commissioner French, did you have another question?
Do they not just pass the cost on to the curb?
You have to.
The curb and gutters to the, to the.
You have to, but you have to, but you have to, here's the thing, and I'll say this, I'm done. You have to pass the price on, but how much money can everybody moving to Blount County afford? That's, that's, that's the moral of the story. You know, it's the final, it's the final cost, you know, so I understand it from both sides.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenship. And you don't have to sit down, I mean, we may have more questions for you. Mr. Shore, you had a question, you wanted to make a statement.
If, if you could come up to the microphone so we can get it on, and I would like to remind the commission, there's another meeting coming on after this, the border zoning appeals at six o'clock, so we need to be out of here by five forty-five. So just keep that in mind, and maybe we can be a little more succinct.
Yeah. I wanted to address the thing you're talking about, the abusing the curb and curb cuts in the city of Mariville. You, you, when you purchase your building permit, you purchase a curb cut permit, and they are very, very strict, how you saw it and how you do it, and that whole problem is eliminated. You don't cause curb trauma, was the word they used years ago, and you don't abuse it. So you can incorporate it in the building permit and get away, and get by that, and that's exactly what they do, and I think it works very well in the city.
Doug had mentioned that as an option, but go ahead.
I did have one more question, and this is for the highway department. I, I'd like to hear what their opinion is.
I intend to, to address the highway department. I wanted to get the builder's input.
Well, before you do that, I'd like to talk to Mr. Weston. I want to ask him a couple of questions if you can come up, please.
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, I just had a couple of questions. I've heard everybody else's opinion, so I wanted to hear yours. I got two questions, really. What do you think about the extruded curb? And then what do you think about the mountable curb, or do you think it's better?
Okay. There's, there's no doubt that curb and gutter is the better curb in the long run, but is it four times better? I don't think that it's four times better. I've been paving in Blount County for about thirty years, and done curbing in Blount County for about thirty years. The original curb, their extruded curb, was an eight inch tall, eight inch wide curb. It was easily breakable, and I think Bill will tell you it caused a lot of trouble. For the past, I guess, fifteen years, the city of Mariville has been using a twelve inch wide curb, which, Mr. French, this isn't curb and gutter, that is an extruded curb. I wanted to be sure you knew that, with very good success. It's a very strong curb. You can drive to subdivisions that have been there ten, fifteen years, no problems. The extruded curb, there is a right mold for this county that will serve the purposes of the county and serve the purposes or the goals of the highway department. Most counties and municipalities have extruded curb due to the economics of it. So the right curb mold, extruded curb, will serve the purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. Anybody else have a question for Mr. Weston? Go ahead, Commissioner French.
If someone else does, I mean, you said, you said this is an extruded curb?
Yes, sir. The.
Why does it say mountable curb?
This, it, it, it's an extruded.
Extruded mountable curb.
It's, okay, an extruded curb can be mountable.
Okay.
What, what does mountable mean? Maybe?
Means.
Mountable.
Drive over, yeah, without.
You don't have to cut it.
You can, correct. And that's a good idea, if, if you can come up with the right mold.
And the other question, you said that the curb and gutter is better than the extruded curb, and, and I'm just curious, what you're basing, what you base that on?
There, there is four.
More weather resistant, is it what?
There is four times the amount of concrete.
Okay.
In one foot of curb and gutter than there is in one foot of extruded curb.
Okay.
So back to the question I'd asked earlier with, with, to Al, an eighteen inch mountable curb is approximately fourteen or fifteen foot dollars a, a linear foot, where a twelve inch or thirteen inch mountable, same design?
The, the city of Mariville curb is, is called mountable, non-mountable, but it's a twelve, it's, it's basically the same thing that's on your picture. It's very close.
So that, the picture that we saw, I guess it's Ambern Estate stuff that we saw earlier, is that, am I, am I seeing this correctly? Is that's what we call a mountable curb, is the county has just a smaller version of that?
That's a mount, the Ambern Estate's, Ambern Estates is a mountable curb and gutter built on the stone. It is a slip form curb. The one that Ron French keeps talking about, it's built on the binder course, it's a mountable extruded curb. I know they're interchangeable words and they're confusing. The idea is we take a Mariville mountable, non-mountable curb and just flatten it out so you can actually mount it, you build your driveway up to the back of it, doesn't move. I think Tom's point.
Does that, is that sufficient? I mean, I'm assuming it's the same, it's just smaller, but that's not.
I'm going to let Tom answer that and Jeff Hatcher let you know what they think.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for Mr. Weston? We're going to have to keep moving here. Thank you, Mr. Weston. Jeff, you want to speak?
Let me address the questions, clarify some confusion. On your packet that Doug gave you dated July fifteenth, page four, this right here, the top one is what we're talking about is the current Blount County curb. As you can see, it's a lot thicker concrete as compared to the curb section showed on the back. This is closer to the Mariville curb, that is not the Mariville modified, it's relatively close. Mariville's about a half inch taller, with a little bit different profile to it. As you can see, under compression, this would be more likely to crack than what the Blount County cross-section is. And this supplies more structural strength at the edge of the road. So you know what you're talking, you know, what's being talked about. Whenever you say twelve inch, you're not discussing, you know, the same item. This is, this is a lot thicker.
Yeah, Jeff, I appreciate that, Jeff. Yeah.
What, Jeff?
The one on top of page four is a much more substantial curb. That's the one Tom said takes four times the concrete.
And this, this is, if you'll notice, it's called a rollover curb, and there is a difference between the rollover and the mountable. The city of Mariville standard curb, you have to cut it. Mariville has a requirement for an apron then to back that up. You have to pour an apron of some type, most contractors included, in their concrete, concrete driveway. But the purpose is, is that brings the back up to the level of the top of the curb. So you would pick up an extra expense there that we're not discussing. So, so you've got a hundred foot lot, and based on these numbers, you'd be talking about a thousand more dollars for a hundred foot lot. The developer then would transfer the cost savings to the builder. If you done as Mariville done and required that apron, the builder would have to pick up that cost then. So if you had a gravel driveway, you would have to build the apron to maintain the water flow in the road. Whereas with this curb, you would not have to build an apron to accomplish the same thing. That's one of the issues. And with this, we would not have to have that apron maintain the integrity of the water flow down the road.
Have you, have you had in the planning region, the curbs that, under Mariville regulations, has, has, do the county have any maintenance issues beyond normal or reasonable for the ones that, that have been put in place?
Well, see, the, the issue there for us is the fact that if you, if you don't have the apron as backup, which we don't in the county, then you have somebody develop a house on a downhill slope, they're bad about cutting those curves, then water runs off, and highway department's getting calls on that. Then if you cut that curb, Mariville curb, and don't apron it, you run the risk of breaking down the asphalt into the driving lane.
Let me ask, based on that, and just a conversation, kind of the comment that Ed made, that the Mariville has the, what'd you call it, curb responsibility or?
Yeah. A curb in, and then you inspect it and go switch it.
If we had that in our regulations in the county, would that help at all, or just be meaningless, or would that be beneficial?
Once again, you're talking about costing the county money to go out and inspect that. And highway department's not got the resources to do that. I don't know.
I understand, but also from an economic standpoint, sometimes things, you know, it's cheaper to inspect it upfront than it would be to make the changes or corrections at the end. But is that something that's necess, I just like, I like that, it puts the responsibility upfront. I mean, to me, it makes sense, no matter what we do, right?
We're going to have to keep things moving. David, did you have a question or?
Let, let, I guess Bill's going to answer.
If I could, please, I appreciate this meeting. We saw this problem several years ago. As you know, this goes back two oh three, two oh four, five, settled on what we've got now in two oh seven. Part of that study group that made these changes were developers. When they've got out and done the thirty inch curb and came back and said, guys, this is expensive, we listened to that. Heard from two gentlemen back here I've got the greatest respect for in their concrete business, Tom in his asphalt business, Ed Shore, I've dealt with him now for twenty years in his developments. We've worked well together. The street itself, with the guttering, curbing and guttering on it, that is a channel for your water. As Jeff alluded to a little bit, downhill sides where the problem begins. Whoever cuts that curb, whether it's cut, whether it's pushed and broke out, there's a problem right there. Unbeknownst to the people of this county. Unbeknownst to the people of this county, whoever cuts that is responsible for that water. We get the calls, though. Come get your water off my driveway, out of my garage. We didn't do it and people don't understand that. When, when they cut a driveway out on the uphill side, whether they cut it, saw it, push it out or whatever, we're constantly getting calls, come and clean this rock up out of your road. We're out there before the, the, the homes are even built. We're out there cleaning rock up out of the roads. With the weight that goes in on those driveways after they cut, we have problems with the asphalt. They're breaking that section down, not only the topping, but the binder and the stone base. We should not have to spend any dollars whatsoever out of county funds other than mowing these subdivision streets for twenty, twenty-five years. That's why we chose the curb and gutter that we chose. We don't have that cut. We don't have that damage to go back out and, and try to work on before the roads are even, the blacks gone off of them. The, the calls on the water, when that curb and gutter stays intact, we can't, we can't handle a hundred year storm. But these things were designed for roughly the twenty-five year storm. They'll handle that. Those calls have stopped. We don't have to go out and tell the folks and listen to their graph and complain because everything in their garage is wet. You cut the curb, I didn't do it. You're responsible for it. And any lawyer in the county will look it up and tell you it is whoever cuts it is their responsibility. All we tried to do back then, I know development's down. It was, it was going down when these were changed. We've had a few out there, we've got a few in place we've not had any problems with. I personally don't feel, John and I have worked for twenty years to make things better for Blount County through the, the planning regs he's got, through the subdivision regs that we have seen over the years. We have think, I think we have made things better. For the citizens, I don't get property taxes, you all know, but my funds are limited and I shouldn't have to be spending anything on a brand new development that, that just opened up for sales. We shouldn't have to go in, other than go in and mow the shoulders. So that's why we, we chose this. That's why I'm comfortable with this. And again, it's not the dollars. I'm sorry, you know, the things have cost us more. It's costing more for developers, but that's the nature of the beast. As years goes along, things has gone up, but it can be recouped back through the price of lots. That's, that's been the name of the game from day one. Whatever I spend on it, I wanna make my profit off of the sales. My take, my opinion, take it, use it, absorb it. But that's, that's the highway department's opinion on the curb and gutter we got now, which I feel is the best. We are working with Maryville to get their planning region that we are responsible for to change over two hours. So it's there. I, I like it and, and I'm, I'm comfortable with it and, and we just don't have to go back and worry about it after the fact.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe, maybe stand right there, Superintendent. David, you got a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be quick, okay? So I just want some clarification. You're, you just said that you're working with the city to have the city and the planning region to come toward the county regulation.
Yes, we are.
Right? And you said that who cuts that curb right now, today, is responsible for what happens after that?
Check any, Dave, check any lawyer. They're gonna tell you that is a channel for the water to go in.
Right.
It goes to the drop off point where the, the drainage goes. You cut it, you're responsible for that.
And that backs up to the previous meeting when I asked Mr. Shore and your employee to come back with a solution. Ed's solution is to require it in the permit to cut it. The county stand is that there's already a solution there that whoever cuts it's responsible.
There are, and should we have another person to pay?
Right.
I mean, we're, we're looking at the cuts that the county's made already. The highway department, I'm down to forty-nine people. I've cut people just due to what I'm hearing the people tell me, you know, we've got too many employees. The mayor's office has cut people. We're cutting county government. Why should we have to put another person on staff, the, the police, everything that, that should be taken care of on the front end?
One last thing is...
If I could, before you go into the next question, there, there is a gap in the, the discussion here. Bill's talking about damage to the person's property. If the damage is within the right of way from the action of that curb cut, it's still the, the responsibility of the highway department. In other words, if the road starts deteriorating...
If it's on right of way, yes.
Yeah.
But the water, when they cut the curb, they take responsibility for water going down that driveway. Okay? They, they've got to make concessions to keep that water up here in this channel of which that was designed for. The road and the curbing is the channel for the drainage. Okay?
And one last question. This, I don't think it concerns you. It's just a statement and I wanna clarify that it's not Mr. French, and it's the last one. When you asked what a mountable curb, definition of a mountable curb, Mr. Shore said it was drive over. Well, and then Al said something about driving your Porsche over a curb. Well, there's mountable curbs over there that you can't drive a Porsche over. So, not that I have one, but, but a rollover curb, looks like to me this dimension, you could drive just about anything you wanted to over it without a cut. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just trying clarification is what I'm asking for. But, but a mountable curb, not everything can be driven over a mountable curb.
No, you cannot.
Okay. All right. And I said the last thing, but I talked to three builders that's not here today. Every one of them had three different opinions, but the one thing they said is they wanted it uniform. So...
We're trying our best. And then we've, we've had meetings set up with Brian Boone. We've met with Brian Boone. We're still talking with the city of Maryville through Brian Boone. So Al Coles got the same thing we got, larger, but theirs is intact. And we're trying to get it to where the region itself will be one as everybody wants it. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have a question for Superintendent Dunlap? I guess just a quick... Commissioner Allen.
Cost of a square foot of binder?
Square foot of binder? I can give you in tonnage. You figured out the square foot?
Well, I mean, all the costs we have are per linear foot.
Okay.
And they just didn't subtract the binder that you're replacing.
One ton of asphalt will cover a ten by ten square, two inches thick. Okay? We're paying roughly sixty-three dollars a ton. That's what I'm telling you. I can figure asphalt, somebody else, somebody else can figure ton.
Six twenty times two?
Twenty, six. Ten by ten and then sixty-three dollars. That's a hundred.
Be a hundred.
Times two? Four inches of binder? That was two inches, right?
That's two inches. Yeah, you double that for four inches.
One and a half times.
One and a half times.
Three inches of binder.
So is that, just trying to get my math around this.
Yeah. But I, I, I figure my stuff in, in, in the yard with, with, with asphalt.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five dollars worth, okay. I think... Will the county be responsible for repairing the curb and, a curb and gutter, if it breaks or something happens? After, after, after a warranty period, yes. Then, then the county would be responsible for repairing those? Yes. And a lot, a lot of the, the damage we were seeing was in some of the older ones back then that hadn't built out. Some of the newer ones, the same way. I think Ron alluded to making them come back and repair. That repair's hard to make after the fact. You're, you're, you're setting everything down in phases and in steps as you go along building your road and your gutter. After it's already in place, everything's in place, it's a pain in the hine to come back and fix it.
Bill, I've got a comment. You know, I made that comment earlier. You know, first of all, I wanna make sure we're not jeopardizing the liability of the county and their... But do you think there's any opportunity for taking our, and I like the type of curbs we have, the rollovers or, to reduce that without jeopardizing the integrity of that? Do you think there's any room for that possibly?
Personally, I do not. I think, I think when we, when we settle back on the eighteen inches that we're on right now, I think we took that all into play, Tom. And then we settled on eighteen just before we can keep the integrity of the curb itself and the roadway itself. Okay? You've got enough concrete out there to hold it. You've got enough concrete out there for your trucks and whatever to go across it. As they bring the building materials, concrete into that lot, I think it's there and it will handle that. But anything less, I think, will take away the integrity of it. And we, we didn't, we didn't do this haphazardly. We spent, God, how long, John? Over two years worth of study, four years worth of study on this. You know, we didn't take anything lightly whenever we done it. And then, and, and we, we felt like, and I've heard from both contractors back here, this is the best.
And I know the, the permitting process that was brought up from the city, that would ultimately benefit the county. And you, unfortunately, there's a cost of doing that.
There is a cost.
But would that be a benefit to you if that was...
Down the road, maybe. Maybe down the road. We, we don't have the luxuries Maryville and Al Coles got. You know, we're, we're very limited in, in what we got, what we got to pay for. And, and, and it, it, it's hard for us. We've got two people now that, that does the inspect work, and that's what we've had over all along, two to three people. Well, I've got down to Jeff and the Colonel here, Chico Messer. They are developers. The Colonel is a P E and engineer. He knows what he's looking at. He knows what needs to be. And he, his opinion is like my opinion. These two gentlemen here, that's why they're where they are. I want the best for Blount County. And I feel if we go back on some of this old curb that we did have, we're, we're setting ourselves backwards. We, we, we spent too many years and too many hard meetings like this to come to this point that we're at now to make things better for the highway department, for Blount County as a whole. And, and again, it all boils down to the dollars we've got. I don't have the, the, the resources, the dollars to go out there and fix something that shouldn't have to be looked at for several years down the road. The milling, I'll, I'll address what Ed's saying now. The milling on, on a new surface, there's materials out there now that are being recommended or being used in subdivisions that don't require milling. It, it, it's an overlay, it's, it's called a slurry seal. It gives you back your skid numbers. It's got real fine gravel in it. It puts back the integrity of that surface. The, the, the top coat of that asphalt is a wire surface. That's all it is. It, it sheds the water and it's your wire surface. When that wires down, then you can put this slurry seal back over top of it and you get back your wire surface and you get back your skid numbers. So it don't have to be milled right off the bat. So there's things out there now that, that has come a long ways from where we were several years ago. You, you could, you could overlay and overlay till you had a drop off in your curb. I've seen Maryville do it many, many times until they went as far as they could and had to mill. But right now, we, we'd be, we'd be looking at something like that.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you.
All right, we are drawing close to the time that we've got to wrap this up. Doug, you have any additional comments?
Not really. I'd just like to thank everybody for being here and taking the time to discuss it. That's all I have.
All right. I guess, when I look at the numbers here, and I, I think all of us are looking at the same, same numbers. The four to five dollars a linear foot to the fourteen to fifteen dollars a linear foot kinda gives us all heartburn. Go ahead.
Could I speak to the President?
Sure.
I got quite a bit of experience in, in this area. I'm sorry. My name is Chico Messer. I'm the Assistant Superintendent to Mr. Dunlap. I am a professional engineer, have been since nineteen ninety-one. In the previous career, I was a base civil engineer at the airbase. Had a lot of experience with concrete. But I want to address the group from the terms of expenditure. Mr. French, I think you pretty well nailed it down. It's the early, the initial investment we're asking for the developer to put in to prevent the long-term maintenance for the county. Because we're in a physically constrained environment. We're fighting and striving for every penny we can get to pave the roads, to keep the mowing going on and everything else. So what I'd like for you to do is look at page five. In the original document dated the fifteenth of July. And I know we're running out of time, but please, please note that. This standard was developed and agreed upon after a lot of time and thought. And I'm a firm believer from the old school, let's don't reinvent the wheel. Why do we wanna change and reduce the standards of the county and put that maintenance cost back on the highway department when we're already in a physically constrained environment? And with the, the curb and gutter, the thing we have to understand with the extruded curb, you're gonna have to cut it. Whether it's the modified, whether it's the normally extruded curb, it's gonna have to be cut. And the problem therein lies, and I've had to deal with it twice this week in various areas, of water where people are complaining about water running down their driveways, getting in their garages and flooding. We're continually dealing with that. Likewise, in an area up in the, the mountainous section, we had a, an issue about two weeks ago with all the rock out in the road. And believe me, the phones were lighting up. So I want you to, in the short amount of time I have, please pay attention to this. This standard was developed for a reason. And again, a lot of smart people put a lot of thought into this. So let's don't abandon that. And I, you know, I understand the developers, very smart men, had a lot of experience at it. But please, don't pass that on to the county highway department. We need to have the right standard and we wanna stay with that standard. Any questions?
Is there, is there a cost to that curb permit at the city of Maryville? Is there a cost to that?
Yes, there is. Thank you, thirty dollars. I'm sure. Sorry, but that was true. I understand, sir. Any other questions?
I don't, thanks. Doug, did you have something?
What's that?
Your light's on.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Weston.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me address you. Thank you.
I'd like to add a comment.
Sure.
If the county needs money so bad, the question y'all gotta answer is do you wanna expand your tax base? Your tax base is gonna expand quicker with extruded curb and slower with curb and gutter. It really boils down to pure economics and what the county's goal for growth are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for, yes.
The curb and gutter, in my opinion, and I'm gonna disagree with the... The curb and gutter, in my opinion, long-term, is a lot better for the county. As a developer too, I don't care to spend the money for curb and gutter for the county for the long-term. Thanks.
I, I thank all of you for showing up tonight.
I do have one.
Commissioner French?
Have we had, since we've gone to the curb and gutter, have we had any maintenance issues or anything that, that would cause us any problems that, since we've gone to that?[1743.71]